All right, welcome to this week's episode of Murphy's Law Podcast. With me, my guest and good friend Drew Spanning. We have an interesting topic that is relatively aligned with the Bud Light topic, marketing that we talked about.
Actually, very ironic is not the right word, but kind of interesting that we had that discussion and shortly on the heels of it, right in our own community, it became very, very relevant.
Yeah, so what has happened? And we just kind of got word of this the other day from, from some friends in the community and kind of started kind of looking into it. From some other parents and some other community activists, if you will, I don't really want to use that word, but they're just people that know and that go to school board meetings on the regular and council meetings and commission meetings. And what apparently has happened is the Gaylord Community Schools last week has approved the hiring of a paraprofessional.
Yep.
So kindergarten.
Which a parapro, parapro for kindergarten, that would be somebody who's like an assistant to the teacher, right? So you've got a large class, you need to make sure there's an extra adult in there.
What is a little bit different from this and the reason why it came to us was this individual apparently is a transgender individual.
Sure.
But I think the other portion of it is that there was some information that was, you know, neglected to be given to some of the board members when they were making this, it was a four to, four to two or four to three, something like that. So they did hire this individual. And yeah, this is, this is such a touchy subject, you know, we were talking about Bud Light before and the marketing, you know, with using the, using Dylan Mulvaney. And the backlash and the marketing.
A lot more like, you can kind of almost back up from that and look at it as a big picture, it's not personal.
Right.
Right? It's like, it's dollars and cents, it's a business conversation, it's a marketing conversation, but why I'm so excited to talk about this today and why this is so important to kind of come back and say, well, let's, let's talk about this. Um, this is how it plays out in our practical lives.
Right.
This is really important to talk about, and it's not like you and I, like, we don't have anything to gain, I don't have anything to gain from having this conversation about this.
Right, yeah.
But I know when you and I talked offline about this, we're like, and if we're willing to talk about what happened with Bud Light, we probably should talk about this. And can we offer a perspective or can we offer a discussion that has meaning into this conversation as a whole? As meaning and as a macro, like big picture?
That's my thing, yeah.
And then how does it have meaning in our little community too here? I mean, it's, it's, I'm pretty excited about this, I mean, it's a little nervous, but more excited because I think it, it, we need to talk about this.
It is the, the entire topic, and that's, that's kind of why we, you know, the Bud Light controversy, if you will. You know, everybody can sort of relate to, you know, Bud Light being such a large brand. This conversation takes a little bit further, you know, like I said, it's kind of on the local level. And I, as a libertarian, I take a point of view and there's, there's sort of a political point of view, and then there's, there's also obviously a religious point of view.
Sure.
And there's a scientific point of view. And I come down to, on this particular subject, really kind of the, the basic science, I guess, if you will.
Real quick though, would you also say, so there's a question for you, science, because I feel like the word science has been, has been distorted, especially over the last three years with COVID. Of science being very defined by feeling. Would you also maybe say logic as well? So science and logic that this argument from your standpoint is also a logical one?
Yeah, I would, and I, to a degree, I think they are specifically aligned, I mean, it's difficult. To me, the idea of science is, you know, experimentation gets a particular outcome. When, when you start changing variables to get a particular outcome, that, that's when I start to take issue with some things, you know, get on that macro scale. I, I think that what you're referring to, you know, the, the, I always say, you know, the language is important and how it's used. Yes, the word science definitely has taken on a different meaning. Because for, you know, this is why in our court cases, we always say, you don't, you can't argue the science, you know, when the, when the parents, when we're talking about parents that, that we are in communication with about this subject. When, when we have the topic of masking their kids out of nowhere came up, I said, please don't argue mask science with these people.
Right.
Be, these people, I hate that word. These people being the, the health department in the school.
The group, you've seen that argument to try to get their point across.
Right, the science, as in it is settled.
Right.
And on that particular subject as it related to masking and anything COVID, in my opinion, the, the science is not settled, it is still settling, and I think it's going to take a little longer for it really to officially settle, especially.
Your most honest, actually, you're, you're actually starting to come out on the right side of the science.
If, if that were, yes.
It is, no, you can't deny it, even across the board.
I've always, I've always felt like we were on the right side of a number of things, but I've, I never wanted to challenge the science because it was so hot button, because there were such authoritative figures that were saying, this is what's happening with this particular transgender movement, is there are some very important scientific people that are starting to move some of these terms down the train tracks a little bit away from logic. Yep. So the, the long answer to your question is, I do believe that science and logic have to, have to coincide. And when you start removing that logic, that's when it, it, to me, it really is not science, it's more like propaganda.
Yeah, or power.
Um, and I, I, I think those two have the same end.
Yep, I do too.
Yeah.
So, so let's start off, I mean, what do we know for sure about this situation and, and then maybe we'll go into?
I know parents are hot, they, they, for a couple of reasons, and then I also know.
And not just parents, I think people in general that care about kids.
I think people on the other side of this issue that, that are taking issue with parents standing up against the hiring of this person. It doesn't further the conversation to demonize one side or the other, as we've seen, and in any of these topics, right? I mean, like civil discourse is just like almost completely gone out the window.
Yeah.
Um, and maybe that's what we're, we're attempting to bring.
Bring back into it.
And, and I always say, right, remove the, the emotion from these topics. And let's talk about, you know, some of the motives behind these things and the trends that, that lead to these types of things, I think is really kind of what we want to discuss. But uh, it's so difficult to have an honest conversation when emotions get so ramped up.
Yeah.
And people, we, myself included, need to take a step back. I don't have kids, I don't have kids in school.
Right.
Doesn't mean that this isn't an important issue to me, I find it actually fascinating. And maybe some of you might not find fascinating the right word, but it's the best that I can come up with, with regards to this entire transgender movement, as it has really come on the scene in the last few years.
Huge, right.
You know, when we were first talking about this, what was, Mark, what was that first statistic that you pulled up? Nine to one. Nine to one. There are biological men transitioning to women nine times faster than women.
Crazy statistic.
I think that, I think that's an interesting entry point.
It is.
Into the entire conversation.
It is. Real quick though, let's just frame for anybody who is watching that maybe doesn't know the situation or thinks they know it. What are the knowns right now? There's a parapro. Misha is the name, correct? Is a male, trans, so, so becoming a woman or wanting to be a woman, acts or dresses like a woman in the school, correct? Or, or that's the?
That's the information that I, that, that, yes.
And so the school board voted four to three to allow the hiring of Misha into the kindergarten, not first grade, but kindergarten classroom at South Maple, I believe, is the, or North Ohio.
I think it's North Ohio.
North Ohio, okay, so North Ohio, any other information pieces we need to make sure we have right? But I think those are it, right?
Yeah, um, this is the normal hiring process for parapros, for teachers. Usually candidates come forward and then they make recommendations and then the board votes on those recommendations.
Correct.
Um, and in this instance, they voted four to three to hire this individual as a parapro, parapro. North Ohio for kindergarten, yeah, yeah.
So from your standpoint, why is, so, so obviously this is a huge issue and both sides are going to be really, you said emotional about it. Now, I don't think, you know, emotions, even coming onto this, to this topic, or to the, like, today to talk about this, I was very excited. Right? And that's an emotional response, you're, you actually get energy, you have this adrenaline that comes through and you're excited to talk about something because it's important. And so their emotions are good. Oftentimes, it's an indication or a result of something that's either important to you, something that means something. But you're absolutely right, I think, when we're talking about this, to try to not make an emotionally based argument, one way or the other. But let's allow us to have a discussion about this that maybe adds, my hope, my hope is by the end of this logic, I'll probably take a little bit of the religious side because that's a little bit of my specialty. And we come to a place where we say, I think we added, yeah, we, I think we need to talk about that, I think we, we, it would take a little, take a little commercial break, so truth be told, I was sitting here last time we were chatting, and actually I, I saw your bumper sticker. So being somebody who's very faith-based my whole life, like I've been in full-time ministry since I was 19 years old, saw that and I'm like, dude, okay, I get the comedy, like I get the, the Ian Murphy, you know, typical slapstick humor he has going on here, but the problem is it's not theologically correct, no, this one, this one's hilarious. That one's.
I don't know if this will come in clear enough.
Yeah, that one's great, you're not, yeah, say it.
Yeah, you're, you're not stupid, you're just not lucky when it comes to thinking.
So, which is true, that's, and, and you know what, what's funny about that is you and I would admit that there's many times we're in that same category.
Oh, absolutely.
When you joke, people who joke, here's the thing, people who joke, the reason they can joke is because they don't actually take themselves overly seriously.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
Or they're part of what they're joking about, self-replicating comedy is some of the best, right?
That's hilarious.
In my opinion.
Yes, so this one though, okay, so Jesus would slap the shit out of you. So I looked at that, I'm like, man, we're having this conversation about such an important topic, and I was like, ah, Ian, I don't, I at least have to bring it up, I'll let you be you, I'm a guest on your show, but it, like, we could say, Peter would slap the shit out of you, we could even say John the Baptist would, like, Peter cut off the ear of a guy, right?
Right.
But Jesus, he wouldn't. So anyway, yeah, that was, I thought, you know.
The problem is, Peter would slap the shit out of you.
Isn't a good bumper sticker.
Didn't make any sense, I'd be going, why is this, why is Peter so angry?
You're taking it down.
No, well, yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, no, I mean, it's, it's not that I, you know, I would change who I am for you, but I completely understand exactly what it is you're saying.
Sure.
And partly is because you understand the comedy of exactly why we have somebody. Those that, that have seen any previous pod, we have Dashboard Jesus.
Hey, I don't mind Jesus in the middle.
We're fully represented.
I think that's, I think that's a beautiful, I think that's a beautiful thing.
And I appreciate quickly, you know, where, where you're at with this.
Sure.
And as a person, I wouldn't say on the opposite side of the spectrum from you. You have taught me some things that I would never come adjacent to if you and I weren't friends.
Right.
So everybody needs a Jesus buddy in their life.
Cool. I like that, I like that, that's perfect, well, that makes me feel good.
It's an important point of view.
It is, it is, and partly because I think, um, well, we'll get in this later, but I think the.
Excited.
Yeah, I think the actual answer, the actual answer in this is exactly why Jesus came to this earth. And now I'll pause there, but let's jump into, I think, the most fascinating, when you told me nine to one men transition to wanting to be women. That framed this whole discussion for me.
Yeah.
So tell me.
Did that come from Cleveland Clinic, was that? So no slouches in, in the department of what's going on.
Absolute, fully credible source, nine to one, how, what do we make of that? I mean, from your standpoint, when you heard that, what did you think?
I mean, I really wasn't surprised, anecdotally, from what, from what I have seen, it seems like that's the case.
Yeah.
Now, nine to one certainly is a huge number.
That's a huge number.
But growing up in the time that I grew up, we grew up, I'm maybe just a little bit older than you.
Much better hair.
But listen, I, you know, Playboy was, was a thing.
Sure.
Uh, or still is a thing, I guess, um, but you know, the subscription service with the magazine, and so there's always, you know, Victoria's Secret, you know, was built on the sexualization of women.
Correct.
Targeting me.
Yeah.
Right, you, and you.
Same with Miller Lite, they're commercial.
Miller Lite. I wasn't even going to go there because it was so adjacent to what we were doing, but if you haven't seen Miller Lite's latest commercial, have, have a look at that. They're, yeah, I don't know what they're thinking either, but whatever. Where, where was?
Perpetrator and then blaming everybody else.
Yeah, 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 exactly.
Anyway, okay, but what you were saying is, okay, the.
I was gonna make like an OJ Simpson joke or something.
So the over-sexual, yeah, the over-sexualization of our culture, we're degrading, yada, yada, yada. Interesting that a very, by nature, sexual thing, changing your, your sex or wanting to change your sex or, or pretending your sex is changing by calling it gender, however that's called, or however we discuss that logically, seems like a, a real guy thing to do.
It, it does, and it, it does, and it's, it's not lost on me in this entire conversation that, you know, the two of us are two straight men having a conversation about exactly what's going on, doesn't mean that it's not relevant.
Yeah.
We're also having a conversation because people have expressed their concerns to us.
Yeah.
So again, this is why I find it fascinating in the times that we live in, when the language is being maneuvered in such ways, when you take a word like pedophile and you start to change it to minor attracted person.
I see where you're going with this.
Yeah.
How far down the rabbit hole does this go?
I think it, it could go, it could go real far.
Yeah.
To our detriment.
Yes.
And, and I think that, and I don't mean that on this particular person that we're discussing, I mean, as a society as whole, as, as civilization is supposed to be perpetuated, right?
Yeah.
You, what's the old saying, well, I shouldn't say old saying, because it can't be that old, there's a saying, you put a bunch of trans women on an island, and what eventually happens?
Right, nothing.
Right. This is where the logic portion has to come into play at, at some point.
So let's frame this, let's, let's back out, because one of the things I was thinking about and kind of mentally preparing for this. Let's frame the issues here. So, so on the surface, I think what people get mad at, but it's hard to put a voice to it, or it's hard to articulate it. There, so one, on one side, people see a lot of parents, especially moms, getting very mad at this situation, like my kid's not going to go there.
Yeah.
Or they see all those kids and they want to protect them.
Yeah.
Okay, and you have a side, the other side that looks at them and says, well, where's your compassion? Why can't a trans male be a good teacher? Why are you telling them they can't do that? That is ethically wrong of you, okay? So let's try to put, let's try to put some, some definition or some voice to this. What do you feel about that from your perspective, like, is, why is it right for a very large group of people to be frustrated or angry that this is happening right now?
It seems in the conversations that I've had, the majority of it revolves around, and I suppose I would agree with this, again, I don't have kids, but I probably would align with some of this, the logic, when you have somebody that is identifying an opposite of what they're.
Obviously are, from a sex standpoint.
In a learning environment, in an early learning environment especially. I think, I always talk about indoctrination. There's, and there's, you know, we had this conversation briefly, there's all kinds of levels of indoctrination, it depends on how you look at it, you know, people think that, you know, holding your heart, hand over your heart, you know, I was at city council last night, and, you know, they, there's a brief prayer, there's a hand over your heart and you, you know, do the pledge. Some singing the national anthem before a ballgame, people, so a lot of people think that's, you know, indoctrination's all over. I think what I'm hearing is the parents, and parents that don't even have kindergartners are going into kindergarten for next year, because that's what this hire is for, is for next year. They're concerned about this early learning environment, when they're supposed to be learning the basics, and here is a teacher for all intents and purposes, because you would know better, paraprofessionals actually have more one-on-one time with the kids than the teacher do. And that's my understanding, and I'm not a teacher, but that's my understanding, and it seems that these parents, moms again especially, like you said, they were the same ones that filled the restaurant when we had the meeting about suing the health department and the schools. Mom, there, there's a reason why a lot of these new org, grassroots organizations start with moms, Moms for, Moms for this, that kind of thing. Whether, whether you agree with them or not, there's a reason why, you know, the quote unquote mama bears are, are upset. And it seems like it's this early learning environment being taught by an individual that they themselves seem confused.
Yeah.
Now, when I use air quotes, I use that because we're talking about gender dysphoria.
Yeah.
Right? Somebody else has previously commented about that mental issue. Has this person been given any kind of test to, to their competency when teaching young children in that early developmental stage, especially kindergarten through fourth grade or whatever North Ohio is now?
Yeah.
That seems to me is the biggest point of contention for, for the parents that I have spoken with, seems like that is the issue. And maybe, and a couple have even expressed, maybe at the high school level, where they're a little bit more developed and they can understand what this particular person is going through with regards to gender dysphoria.
Yeah. So, so one of the things, and I think themes of what I've seen you throughout the years is this idea that fear is a driving motivator for many people, right? And so oftentimes, what you receive responses to is fear, sometimes that fear is justified, sometimes it's not. In this case, I would say the, these moms that are, one of the things is they are afraid, they're afraid of where the moral compass or the moral fabric is going with the young kids and subjecting them to something that the kids themselves will go, well, that's not true, that's not a, that's, that's not a woman, that's a man. And so at the very core of understanding right and wrong, you have somebody that you're taught to respect, and this is why I think one of the core issues is if some, if take the emotion out of it and try to articulate exactly the point that's happening.
Yeah.
I'm afraid, and I heard it said like this, kids are much closer to the truth, you think you're going to confuse kids, actually, the kids are probably least confused.
Yeah.
They're the ones that are easy, like a kid can smell out a lie much faster than an adult kid, why, they're much closer to innocence.
Yeah.
Right? A child, much, much closer, they're.
So honest.
And they haven't been hurt so much that they've had to build up the fences in order to protect themselves, right? So it's very easy to trust, it's very, and that's why, um, I mean, man, I can go into so much, even in the religious sense of, of this idea of being born again, of being like a child again in your relationship with God, because it's that wiping away of all these hurts and anger and things that you identified yourself with, and coming back to your true honest self, right? Your true honest self is much more childlike. And so, and you, I mean, that holds true for even, put aside religion, that holds true in therapy work, when you're going through psychology or therapy work, when you're going to somebody, they're always getting back to your child self, they're helping heal that inner child in order so you don't express yourself in a way that's negative or destructive, right?
And so. I, I get called a child all the time on Twitter.
And that just shows how amazingly close to perfect you are.
I thought it was how, how close to the truth I was.
I think so too, but you hear what I'm saying, so I think, I think one of the big things when, when, when you hear somebody saying they're so outraged about this and, and they don't even know how to express their emotions, what they're saying is, well, I'm, I'm afraid of what this is going to do to the kids because this is confusing.
Yeah.
A kid shouldn't have to be put in a situation where they have to articulate this person that is helping them, so they're endeared to them, but an obvious dis, distortion of truth, which then brings us up to our next point, what is true?
Yeah.
What is truth?
What, what is truth? To, to me.
That's, that's the question.
To me, this is where logic starts to really kind of come into play.
Yeah.
There are only certain types of equipment that will allow you to reproduce.
Yes, this is very true.
There are generally certain types of pairings of chromosomes
Yep.
that go with those pieces of equipment.
Yes. You can't, you, like, there's nothing else past that.
I don't know if a biological man has ever given birth to a child. This is sort of where, for me, and, and I've been attacked for this, this is just sort of where I, I start the conversation. I don't care what Drew identifies himself, I, you can identify as a giraffe, I don't care, that's fine. I think it was maybe Dave Chappelle that said it, at what point, at what level do I have to participate in your self-esteem?
Hmm, wow, that is awesome.
Right?
That's awesome, yeah.
And, and I, 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 I get that.
Yeah.
You be you, right?
Sure.
Like, like you say, like with, with the bumper sticker thing, right, you be you, that's great, I, I'm totally okay, blah, 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 do whatever, you can identify as a tree, that's fine. But don't go around expecting everybody else to have to participate, and some people can call it a delusion, they can call it whatever they want, I'm not saying that it is, I go back to gender dysphoria.
Yeah.
Right? This is where I just sort of say X is an X, X and Ys.
Yep.
Obviously, not every woman can have children.
Sure, and not every man can, can do what they need to do to have kids either.
Absolutely.
Yep.
There are very few, the percentage is extremely low of intersex, right, with that, the.
Minute.
Very, very much so. That's also another argument, well, what about that? That is such a small portion of the entirety of the argument, so I generally kind of just put that one in the drawer, but for me, it just comes back to that, that basis right there. Now, when you start talking about, you know, gender is a, is a cultural construct and these other things, you talk about going down rabbit holes. This is where language really starts to get muddled up and feelings really start becoming involved. But that's, to me, that's just kind of, that's. But that's, to me, that's just kind of, that, that's where it starts, right there for me. The, the logic of. The, the two sexes.
So break down this though, so somebody, so going back to that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to play the other side right now. Um, because I think it's an important exercise, one thing is, I hope people are watching this that disagree with us. Okay, and, and I'm not afraid of that, I think in fact, healthy. Culture is a culture that can disagree and still progress.
Yeah, I mean, you gotta be able to debate ideas.
You have to.
This is, this is an extremely important one. Um, not necessarily important so much to me personally, personally, like it is my friends that have reached out to me and that have, I've had endless conversations. But, yeah.
I think it's important to be able to literally stone cold, be able to look at somebody and say, I completely disagree with you, but I still love you. And that, that's okay.
Now, that is a lost art, if you will.
But that needs to be, because if we can't do that. Well, then we, we don't, we're not gonna exist, and here's why, so. Think about historically. And, and this, this goes off a little bit, but. When I, when the, the problem that's going on right now, uh, or let's, instead of the problem, the debate that's happening now with transgenderism. This is not new, oftentimes we think, oh my gosh, this is our culture so far down. This or this, or we've, we've lost our way. Uh, no, 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 we, we've had cycles of different culture things throughout all the span of history. You can go back forty-five hundred years and see transgenderism, okay? This is not a new thing. Um, and so. How, we can look into history, we can, we can. Look past the curtain, and we can see how this already played out a bunch of times, it didn't work, right? That, i- in, it, it relates, anytime you go into this space, it relates with polytheism, okay? So the idea more than one god, or the absence of a god, right? Um, it also relates to paganism, okay? And so when that happens. How is power or how, how is the social? Uh, makeup of a culture? How is it governed? It's a power-based system, and whoever has the power is determining what truth is, right? So whoever has the power, that's the truth you live by, and when somebody else has the power, that's the truth you live by. Correct? Well, that doesn't work. You can look all over, and there's a reason America did so well and worked so well, right? So I wanted to throw that part in, into this conversation, because. This is just part of the cycle of what cultures go through all the time.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And we talked, we talked about the over-sexualization. Right?
Probably not enough.
Probably not enough.
Huge, huge part of it.
So I don't mind, I don't mind, that's an awkward, it's an awkward topic, right? We don't like to talk about porn, we don't like to talk about the way men degrade women, what's, you had the Chappelle. Uh, about him on a subway, about knowing what it feels like to be a woman, what was that? Oh, it was, it was, Dave Chappelle said, I finally know what it's like to be a woman. I had a big bag of money, and you could tell it was money, I had to go on a subway train, right? And when I went on the subway, I saw everybody looking at me like they wanted what I had. He's like, for the first time, I figured out what it felt like to be a woman, right? I mean, since the beginning of time. Men are geared in a, in a very sexual way. That, obviously, it's not like overly exciting to talk about this. But that plays into this conversation big time, especially when we started with this nine-to-one ratio. Because if that is how a man is wired, it is, I, I don't care what you say, it is how a man is wired. It is also, watch this, it's also the place of the greatest hurt. Okay, so watch, if you're hurt, especially in your youth, or when you're young sexually, okay? What that does to you as a person and your identity, it crushes it. Or as you get older, and if you are not confident, or if this is a place of deep hurt. There is, there is such a loss of loneliness there. That. The act of reaching out to find a way to medicate that, to find a way to make that feel better. That, that's so real. Okay, it's why I have compassion when somebody says, well, I'm born this way, I'm born a trans, I'm born gay. Um, I understand why you have that feeling. Because, um, something isn't working out, right? So I have to be born this way because this satisfies my pain. Right? Now, you may not say it that way, and you may not exactly agree with me on that, but. What's happening? Um, in this cycle of culture, right, as, as. I could almost make the argument that the, the trans, what's happening in transgenderism. Is just an extension of going further down the road of sexual perversion.
Sure. Yeah, go.
No, 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 go ahead.
Well, no, I was, when we were, you know, in pre-production, we were talking about, do we have this, any statistics on, on the relation between? Transgender, you know, men transitioning to women and, and abuse? Was it? I, I forget, we had some, we had some stats, but it was, I don't think it was that specifically, I think it wa, it was relating to. Um, I think just transgender people in general. There's a, there's a correlation to, to childhood abuse. And, and I don't know exactly what it is, and I'm sorry that we don't have that. Uh, readily available, but, um, I do remember when we were talking about this, that a statistic, kind of a staggering statistic, did come up. Um, that you're talking about. Um, you know, when you say, I may not agree with you, I, I specifically remember this statistic. I mean, I wish I knew specifically exactly what it was, but it, it was basically saying. Um, it, it, it seems that the majority of people that are identifying as trans and either, trans in either direction. Um, had experienced some level of childhood abuse. And it was from a pretty reliable source.
Which is tragic.
Yeah, w- right.
Which is absolutely tragic.
So when you talk about that cycle. You know, we're, there, there's another cycle that, that has to be discussed, you know, between the porn thing. Um, and this targeting of young men and, and men in general continued, but. As it relates to indoctrination from, from early on. What, what do you hear so many times? Adults are saying to children, oh, he's a cute little guy, boy, it's gonna be no time before the girls are chasing after him. Or, or the same thing. Um, you know, I mean. Kids that are on the playground, it, let them play, you know, they don't, you're, you're starting it so early, and that's. That's cycle, and then you introducing them to porn.
Especially in this culture.
Yeah, there's, and the, the ease of access to it. Um, you know, with, with the light boxes and everything, there, there are studies that it's deteriorating all relationships. But I, 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 I think once you start down that, that path, I guess, if you will. It's, it's kind of hard to understand exactly, so when you say, somebody saying, I'm born this way. It's, it's probably hard to see anything other than that. That conclusion.
Yeah, because you couldn't feel anything other than that at that point.
Right.
So I, 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 I wanna have empathy for that, because I wanna say, I, I understand. Why you would think that, and you have to be honest enough with your own hurts. To actually go, you know, I've been empty too. And I've reached out to escape as well. And I think it's important as men, uh, obviously, we're men in this podcast. I think strength comes from actually, instead of escaping from your problems, here, and here's the key. And, and I think this is where, I don't think this discussion goes very often, but as I was thinking about it over and over again, it was like. We can be outraged about it, which I think it's outrageous, okay, so I'm, I'm not dismissing. But dismissing that voice, it's outrageous because it is. But I don't know if we get anywhere in this conversation on a national level. Um, with at le, with, without at least adding. An element of empathy and compassion to go, wait a second. The answer is not just change your behavior.
Right.
Because no one, hardly anybody can. Right? Right? If I go tell you, no, you just have to change, well, there's a reason you're like that.
Right.
Right? And it's over years and years and years of different things you've gone through that creates a, a part personality. And part of your behavior you like, and part of your behavior you don't like, and you're in a constant battle between. Yourself you want to be and yourself you don't want, right? This is very normal, you can see it documented through all of history and all of psychology, okay? And so I think. If, if we were to kind of put something to this, Ian, if I were to ask you, like, okay, if you wanted to add anything to this conversation that had meaning to it. Um, I think everybody who's listening would, uh, already knows, okay, we disagree with what the school board did. I, I do think it's outrageous that this is happening, okay? But I want to say that in a way that is meaningful, that actually adds to the conversation. How would you, how would you respond to that if I were asking you that?
That's a great question. The best, the best answer I have is almost what you just said in two words, honest conversation. And I feel like you cannot when. And this happens on, in both sides, I think. There is just an immediate jump to reaction. Um, there's immediate jump to judgment. There's an immediate need to not even understand. And it's just like. I, I, I don't know any other way to describe it, and that is why I use the word fascinating. I, I'm not trying to relate it to, uh, you know, anything COVID stuff, but. The overall attitude when somebody has such a firm, firmly held position. And an emotional one, and somebody is on the exact si- opposite side.
I see where you're going with that.
And. Both are so steadfast in their beliefs. That neither wanna even just have a conversation, right? An honest conversation and listen. And. Compassion and empathy, sympathy, all those things need to be involved, but everybody needs to understand. Exactly what is happening, and it's, you're just not gonna get that understanding, you're not gonna get through to somebody. When you start shouting them down. Using different terms that are aligned with your beliefs. And you might be right, you might be wrong, but you're never going to have any persuasive argument towards that person.
When you force them.
When, when you're, yeah, you have to change. Well.
No, no one ever has done that.
It, it, it doesn't, it doesn't work. You know, and, and. This conversation may or may not have an impact, I don't know, it's, it's our effort to, to take that. Thirty thousand foot view of the subject, but it has a very, very. Minute implication in our community. You know, a week ago, we're talking about a trans individual doing a Bud Light campaign. And unbeknownst to us. That very same, well, actually, it was about a week before, the school board had done this, and then it sort of kind of started to bubble up. Um, which is why we're kind of talking about it today, and it's not an easy thing to discuss. Which is partly what makes it exciting, but partly why it needs to happen.
Yes, that's exactly it.
And the other thing is. And I don't, you know, I'm always looking for, for tools for myself or other people to use when they. Come up against. Certain individuals that have such firmly held beliefs, like people on either side of this conversation. And I think. From the people that I have talked to, and we haven't talked about this. They, I think some of them, and this may be in relation to a couple of the individuals. That voted for this. Right? Yeah, we've questioned, wow, I'm surprised that so-and-so, you know, would have voted in favor of, of hiring this individual. Um, the motivation behind that, or peer pressure, or, you know, whatever it might have been. Having an honest conversation is important, but you need to understand what's going on. Behind the scenes. And exactly no, but my biggest thing is these parents that are upset. That the school board did this, and are clearly going to be at the next school we're meeting, which I think is maybe June second or June sixth.
Should be an exciting one to get it.
Should be pretty interesting, we, we may, we may try and get there and take the cameras there. Um, these are obviously upset parents. I'm always curious to learn new ways to have conversation, not necessarily to refute somebody's beliefs. But to have that honest conversation in a way. And it, it, it may be a completely moot point on, on some of these folks, because they're just so used to saying. Well, you're a transphobe, or you're TERF, or you're whatever it happens to be. And that's just their go-to, instead of having a dialogue about why. You know, Tim is upset because his first grader. Is gonna be around a confused individual. Um, I'm always curious at things that can be given to them. To help them further their point of view without going to the shouting down. Sort of, is that, am I making any sense? So if, if somebody calls me and says, well, listen, I wanna go to the school board meeting, but I don't, I don't wanna sound like. You know, I am totally against this person right here, it's not about them, it's about the confusion. It's about my kid, it's about this, and. I would love to be able to give them. Something to say that isn't immediately going to. Play into the hands of the other side's firmly held belief. Because, let's be honest, going back to the conversation about language and indoctrination, there has been a huge push. For transgender all over the place.
Huge.
I mean, corporation, large corporations are getting involved.
Everybody.
Scoring systems for, for, uh, large corporations when it comes to.
What's that called again?
D E I, E S G, and a lot of those things.
Which is just crazy.
It is crazy.
That, that's how they're being. That like, that's their measurement of success.
But that's the line that's being, that's being towed, and it is now the shoulders for other, for some of these people to. Kind of stand on and say, well, you're behind the times. Well, look at what Bud Light's doing, or look at the rainbow.
What's going on behind, yeah, what's going on behind the scenes, like behind, behind the scenes, how is power being played? Who's getting paid for all this?
I find it fascinating, again, some of you may not agree with that particular attitude, but I find it fascinating, I found it fascinating since COVID started. And people were relegated to their phones, and this thing really, this was an issue before COVID. But isolating people to just this. Has really amplified.
Yes. There's a bigger picture of what's going on right now.
To change it back to. That nine-to-one ratio, and you start adding these layers of things that are. Working against. Young men and men in general, and I wouldn't say pushing, but when you start stacking these things together. Yeah, and then the isolation. Um, the, the access, free access to porn. Um, the disintegration of, you know, you call it a nuclear family if you want. Uh, I think all of these things start to play into a real identity issue with young men. And obviously some young women. But young men especially, nine-to-one. And they don't know where to turn to. Mainly out of fear, like you were saying. And.
And loneliness, and that's the fear of being alone.
What seems to get.
Pain.
Attention.
And, and I think to, like, you're going through all this. How can we not think this isn't intentional? Right? So, I mean, think of everything you just said. Everything that's going on right now, and, and we can either think of this as passive, like, oh, well, this is just what's happening, like. You know what, we're just evolving as a culture, one evolution usually goes. More towards, um, if you believe in evolution, it's going towards.
I love it, if you believe in evolution.
If you believe, there's, anyway, I won't even get into that, that'll be another podcast, um, but evolution tends to go. I- in the theory of it, at whatever spectrum you believe in things evolving. Um, goes towards more sophistication.
Sure.
Right? And so thi- this isn't even evolution, right? Right? And so th- this isn't even evolution, right? This is actually a degradation. As a D of
I would probably agree with that, yeah.
Yeah. And so that's
Logic.
That's intentional.
Makes it difficult to disagree with that.
It's intentional though. And so we're talking, you know, this goes back to your point. I think we started a long time ago, um, and I just helped frame, but you did it in that this is a fight for, not against. Right? So this isn't a fight against Misha, okay?
Yeah, no, I don't know. I don't know this person from anybody.
It's not against.
She could be lovely.
Right. It's not against Misha. But this is, um, a fight for something much more principled that we have to talk about because if it's not being talked about and if you don't shine a light on it, then the cycle just keeps going.
And, and honestly, I think it gets worse.
Yes.
And on a, on a couple of different levels, not just necessarily like an evolutionary thing, but I mean, as far as the discourse. Um, you know, in that honest conversation, I think it did, yeah, completely degrade, de- degrades and de-evolutionize. I think I make enough words now, but it's my podcast.
You like it? All right. So back, so, so I wanna, I wanna, if I had one takeaway that, that if, if someone are listening to this could take away, one of the things i- is this idea of truth. I love the idea of, um, you can either have a society that is built on truth as held by who has the power or a society built on a foundational truth that doesn't move. In America, we had chosen a foundational truth when we set up the system of our governing system, okay? Like it or not, it's also been our success.
Okay.
And so when you look at a foundational truth and, and you hold on to that and say, well, actually, the reason I believe this is because I actually adhere to this truth. And if anything goes against this truth, I don't actually waver from it. So for me, that is a biblical worldview of how the world works. I don't think what we're going through is new. I think, I think the answers have been given to us thousands of years ago.
Right.
I think it's built into us when we actually come to a realization. And so when we hold that, here's why it works. Your life actually works better. It actually starts to make sense. The loneliness, the different things that happen, the way your family structure is set up and the pain that's inflicted on children at a young age, those go away, right?
Yeah.
And so all of a sudden, that, why is it all of a sudden a group like that does better? Well, their life is working because that's how you were designed. And to think that you were built without design is absolutely improbable. Like you have to have more faith to believe you were built on a complete evolutionary model, right? On a complete, just, you know, it happened, right? And there wasn't a designer. Okay. So from my standpoint, I look at that and I say, I think it's okay to say there's something that's true and right. And something that's not true and right. And it's okay to say, Misha's not right for doing this. And it, it's not a good idea to have them as a kindergarten parapro. But I think in the spirit of how we communicate it today, hopefully brings a good conversation, not one that's just fired up emotionally.
And I think that what I was looking for earlier, that tool for these parents is exactly what you just said was she's not right for this position. And go back and rewind and listen to exactly what he had again. I can't remember everything. I, I scroll pot a little bit, so. But the other, so I want, you know, since, um, I, I have you giggling now. The, the other thing I actually wanted to, and I'm, I'm springing this on you now because I didn't, I didn't even wanna give you time to think about it, but
Good.
When looking at the the totality of this entire movement, if we, if you wanna call it that. Trans transgenderism a- as a whole, right? I, I'm not talking about, um, gays or lesbians. I'm talking about the, the, the T part. Mainly. And, and I suppose this question could bleed over into that, the, the, the other letters as well. Fine. And I don't mean that disrespectfully. My, my question for you is specifically towards the transgender movement. Is it fair or does it align with something that looks like religion, a religion?
Oh, I see what you're saying. That, that the belief that that, yes, okay.
Does that, does that make sense? And, and, and mainly in the aspect of I have such a firmly held belief. And, and I'm not, then again, I'm using religion. I'm not saying Christianity, Catholicism, religion in general. There have been crazy ass religions.
Crazy.
Crazy. I mean, people drink Kool-Aid.
Yeah. Yes.
Right? I mean, there have been so, and, and I'm, and I, again, I'm not trying to, to correlate transgenderism with uh, drinking Kool-Aid and committing suicide. I'm not saying that. What I'm trying to say is there have been a lot of crazy things done in the name of religion. And I'm not saying transgender is a religion. But are there aspects of that movement that look like or that align with what you have seen as somebody that is much more religious than I am? And I know that you have studied some other religions as well.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, and this, so that's my question as, as a somewhat theologian, if I could say that comparatively.
No, technically, technically I have a, I have a theology.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
I, I'm curious at your take on, on if some of these things that you're seeing could be correlated to the idea of a construct of a religion.
Yeah. So, so I mean, I think
It doesn't mean easy question, but.
No, 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 it is because, um, so.
I have my, I have my own views of, of religion in particular. I've had my own experiences with religion in particular and mainly under the, uh, when I say that, I'm saying mostly under the forced
Sure, negative.
Sort of, yeah, sort of. But, well, the, no, the, this, this is how it has been done. Therefore, this is what you should do. Or this is what we believe, therefore it is also what you should believe. Almost a peer pressure.
Yeah, or a sales pitch, right?
I, I actually can get, I can get to the sales pitch portion of it. Mainly because money is involved with most religions. But when it comes to the sort of blind faith sort of thing. And I'm not saying that's, that is improper, but I just think that to me, it looks like there are a lot of correlations between religions, bad or good, that just seem to correlate with it. The part that I find interesting about it is the majority of these folks, I think, this is just my opinion. Are probably non-religious or atheist to, to some degree or
I don't know if that's true.
I, I don't either. I, I'm just saying, it seems, it seems to me like they, they have spurned traditional religion.
Yeah.
For whatever reason.
Sure.
And have replaced it.
Yeah. Yeah. Most have.
With
Yeah.
This. And, and it's not just trans. I think that there are a lot of other things. I mean, there, there's a fair argument to be made that, you know, the cell phone, social media is a zone. Yeah. Thank you. Yeah. Yeah. That, that's where I'm at with that. So I, it's fair to say that you would say that there, that there's some correlation happening.
So, so you, um,
Maybe correlation, maybe correlation is not the right word, but
Similarities.
Similarities.
Is transgenderism being worshiped as something? Yes. But I think, I think it actually is a simpler, this might be a lot more simple. There is a, there's like a, so I, I've had the privilege, privilege of talking to people all over, all over the world in multiple different types of religions, uh, interviewing them even and, and getting to know them, being friends, that type of thing. Like legitimate, like not, not like, hey, I'm a friend, but actually wanting to engage.
As you should. It makes you a better person. It makes you understand them and, and you and your religion better.
Because then it's actually
Honest conversations.
And it's actually not a religion at that point. So you can, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go out. Everything actually is fairly spiritual, whether we want to acknowledge it or not. I believe a person is both physical and spiritual. Okay? So, um, how do you define spiritual? A lot of times like from a, a language standpoint, you lose, when somebody says, oh, that he's got a lot of heart or she's got a lot of heart. She's got a strong will, right? Your spirit is your un bodily power. Okay? So, so we as humans are separated from animals in a way that we have this un bodily power to create out of nothing. We have an ability to think something and then manifest it. That's actually your spirit. That, that's a different power than, than the power you have by eating and then your physical functions that happen, right? So there's, there's two different powers. So whether you want to acknowledge or not, you're always acting within your spiritual. And I believe there's good and there's bad. Okay? And I believe when we're born, uh, we're all born with a human condition of having the ability to do bad. So we could choose good. Okay?
Sure.
I believe that's how all humans were born. Um, and we all have the ability to be, to, to choose dark over light. Okay? As we have come to this, um, thing called life and we have tried to navigate it. Okay? Many throughout history, you can look at religions and most of those religions um, will use the power in order to control and to get what they want. So whether that's money, whether that's, um, decisions, whatever, whatever it is. That's why when I talked about the idea that power, uh, power, power follows truth. If you believe in that, well, then i- it's gonna be really hard because then it's just a constant power struggle and you're constantly changing. You're gonna dissolve. You're not gonna work.
That's kind of where I was going with that with, you know, when you said it earlier with regards to power.
Because, because that you can't follow it anywhere. It doesn't have, there, there's nothing. So this is why, and this is where Jesus entered this conversation, why he was so radical. Okay? So, um, uh, the, the quickest theological discussion on Jesus is he came and, and he wasn't mad at the trans people in the world. He, he didn't come to try to demolish all the moral wrongdoings. In fact, the moral wrongdoings, he actually demolished, like you could argue that Christianity nearly basically took down Rome. Okay? Why? Not because they came with swords and they fought. No, because they came actually with truth. And it completely disrupted an entire construct of a society, right? In fact, the Romans were so frustrated because as the more Christians are persecuted, the more they grew. Okay? And so when you look at where Jesus came, the, the true, um, spirit of Christ. It was the, the, the only people he would have slapped the shit out of to go back to that were the religious people. Okay? So follow that. Okay? The only people he actually turned the tables and got really upset with. And the people that's, that killed him were the religious people, right? The people he had compassion and empathy and coming alongside them. And even though he told those people, hey, what you're doing is wrong. But he gave them another option to actually fill the void of what they're doing. And, and he was able to call it what they were doing because he didn't see, it was like that Patch Adams thing we talked about last time. He didn't look at the trans problem as their real problem. He looked past it. And said, well, this is your problem. And also it's like, oh my gosh, you just hit like, you just actually solved the problem for me, right? And I think, um, not that this is a, a Christian podcast, but I can't not be me. I can't not bring that in. I do believe that seeing the world through that lens actually brings something of real value to people. And when you have that, all of a sudden these needs to try to solve your problems through your own power and your own self-worship dissipates. Okay? So that's when you run to the different escapes. We all struggle with it. You change your identity in order to solve a pain that's really difficult. Because no one, no dad ever looked at you and said, hey, kid, I'm proud of you. Way to go, right? You never felt that. You felt hurt. You were maybe abused, whatever it was. I don't care. But when all of a sudden that you're given something that actually works, those needs, you actually step into this person you were this whole time. And it's not a, I'm changing into somebody new. It's, I'm stepping into somebody I've always been this entire time. Okay? Anyway. I get a little too preachy, but that's good succession.
That's why I had to ask you that question and I didn't want, I, I wanted your, I didn't, I didn't wanna give you any time to prepare or anything. Cause most times you, right off the cuff is the, the, the best time.
Yeah.
That you give me. So, uh, thank you for your perspective on that.
Sure, absolutely.
And maybe it was an affirmation of what I was, was already feeling anyways. And again, it's, it's not something I have a lot of experience in. I know that, that you do and especially other religions as well. So um, I appreciate that, that.
Do it. This is a great, great conversation.
This, this was a fun conversation. We've been, we've been, uh, talking about it for a few days. You know, getting opinions and, and points of view and, um, you know, making sure that we do a service, you know, to what we attempt to do here. But also, you know, the voices that reach out to us and gave us their opinions. You know, we, we wanna do them a, a bit of a service too. And hopefully they'll see this and, and be able to take on that argument, if you will, um, with anybody that, um, exactly what it is that they're feeling and why they're feeling that way and make a, a, a sound, logical argument that, that doesn't sound, you know, bigoted, I guess, if you will. Because I, that's, I don't think that, I, I, the people that I have talked to, that's definitely not what, what they're trying to do. Uh, but they're definitely worried about being portrayed, um, in that type of light by trying to um, come out a- against this, I guess, if you will, um, which goes back to, you know,
I think we need to give people the freedom to, you can be against something without you can be completely against something and, and as long as in your in your conscience, what, what directs your, your moral compass of right and wrong, you know that it is, it is out of a place of compassion. Um, out of a place of empathy, you can still stand strong and say, this is true.
Yeah.
This is false.
To fight for, not to fight against.
Exactly. And you need to have courage to do that. And I think people listening that are looking at that, it's good to do that.
Yeah.
It's needed in our culture for people to understand what they believe, why they believe, right? Actually take time, take time and know why you believe it and be willing to speak it.
Yeah.
Right? And but be willing to listen at the same time.
Yeah, that's the
We put that together, man. And I tell you what, they, I mean, you, you can't change everybody and, but it's not about that. People have to change themselves.
Right.
But it's important because a lot of these types of decisions are being made emotionally.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
They are.
Yeah.
And I guarantee some of the people
You think it's because it's easier?
Yes. Do you think? Yes, it's way easier. I feel this. I feel that, right? And those, I don't wanna diminish feelings. Feelings are very, very important, but often feelings are a product. Um, or they're, they're in effect, not the cause, like it's
They're easily weaponized.
Easily weaponized, but, um, what am I trying to say? It's almost like, um, like fear. Or, or emotion. A lot of times somebody's emotion that they're giving you is not their primary emotion.
Right.
It's their secondary emotion, right? And that's the same with feelings. Oftentimes feelings are just a reflection.
Yeah.
And, and it's worth it to do some self-discovery to go, okay, why do I really think this? How can I really have a good discussion about this, um, and a good opinion? And then be willing to stand up for what I believe is right.
Yeah.
Anyway.
And there, and there's something to that because we, we need these people to be able to articulate themselves in a way. You know, these, these folks that vote on the school board, they're voted into these positions. And you know, the, the easy thing to say is just vote them out, um, whi- which is the way we're designed.
Sure.
The system is designed to work, right? It's representative democracy, right?
Yep.
But they also need to be able to articulate why.
You have to.
And not that one is more important than the other, but it's, it's difficult to truly get at the core of, you know, replacing them. Until you understand exactly why, you know, these folks made that decision for or against whatever your position happens to be. Um, I think of the majority in our community right now are against the hiring of this individual for this particular position. And there is still, I think, some legitimate questions about this person's qualifications.
Sure.
That was another reason that a couple of the school board members did vote against them. So that is important to mention. Uh, that is important to mention because it's not just about. Uh, this person identifying as transgendered and being a kindergarten paraprofessional. There was some information that was left out. There was a sketchy work history, as my understanding goes. Um, and qualifications for this particular position. So it's not just one thing. But they went ahead and approved this person for next year. So there is a lot of outcry in the community and hence our podcast today. And this is one of those topics that, you know, we always talk about, you know, Fuel Fest.
Yeah.
And fuel has always been an acronym for freedom, unity, entertainment and liberty. And this is kind of what we do here on this podcast.
Yeah.
And for the last couple of years, it has been really focused on, you know, our court case and the adjacent things that happen. Uh, with that and a, a bit of comic relief in here, uh, hopefully enough. Um, over, over the years, you know, this is basically going into our third season, so. Sort of what we're doing is we're gonna, we're gonna sort of transition, I think, away from Murphy's Law. Yeah, right? Um, shit, maybe it wasn't. Yeah, it was intended. Um, so we are going to be moving away from. From, from using Murphy's Law and we're gonna kind of sort of expand exactly what we do, you know. Um, it has always been a joke to me, my last name is Murphy's and Murphy's Law, right? Um, and it has been a great tongue-in-cheek thing for what we have been going through for the last couple of years. And as we move and expand exactly what we talk about in the areas, and because obviously. This has nothing to do with the Iron Pig.
Sure.
Has nothing to do with anything that we do other than being content creators. And being interested in this topic and having people come to us and say, this is something I think that. You guys need to talk about and have a conversation about and maybe arm our community. Uh, you know, I wouldn't say talking points, but like I said, just, just some ways to have some o- open and honest discussion. So in that light, what we're gonna. Kind of be doing over the next few weeks is transitioning everything away from Murphy's Law over into Fuel Cast TV.
Love it.
Um, so we're really taking that acronym and expanding it out, and this is what Fuel Fest has been based on since we started it, thanks to your help. Um. That is coming up July second, Fuel Fest, but this is really what's gonna happen moving forward. Um, a little bit different content, um, different discussions, different ideas, trying to remove the emotion from things. Taking a, a larger scale view um of things and asking important questions. Um, hopefully having some open and honest discussions about things. Um, but I think that that fits exactly what we're doing here a little bit better. Murphy's Law will probably end up becoming more of a segment that we do here. Uh, because we do still have an ongoing court case.
Gotta get that.
Uh, and all that nonsense, which uh, there's nothing new that has been happening with that, which there's nothing that should be expected to be coming along. Um, except for the Supreme Court to put our two cases together, but as we move forward. We're gonna be expanding what we do here. Drew has been a, a guest for a couple of episodes and I greatly appreciate.
Absolutely, thank you.
Perspective and point of view, and it's a lot of fun and uh, definitely a smarter guy than I am. So with, with that, with that, we're gonna be moving forward with Fuel Cast TV. You can, uh, our new website's gonna be fuelcasttv.com. Uh, right now, that just links you through to everything that is Murphy's Law right now. We just kinda see that branding start to change over to this stuff right here. Um, and then Fuel Fest.
Yeah.
July second is a Sunday, four to ten P M.
It's gonna be huge.
We're putting together a block party. This is kinda what we're calling it block party, because some people want Fuel Fest, what the hell's Fuel? Well, it's a block party.
It's the definition of a block party.
Taking over the one hundred block in downtown Gaylord.
It's gonna be awesome.
We have music, we have comedy.
And not just music, I mean, our headliner legit is Nashville up-and-comer. He's, he's just about to open for um, a Rascal Flatts lead singer right now. Anyway, uh, Matt Frante, amazing. Um, yeah, you're gonna.
Yeah, I wasn't trying to bury the lead by any means.
You're gonna come, you're gonna come and you're gonna be like, I can't believe I just came in.
I was on the radio. I was on the radio this morning and we do a fifteen-minute segment every Tuesday. And uh, I, I'm like, Randy, I don't know if I have enough time to get in everything, you know, the, the amazing sponsors that we've had jump on board already. Uh, it's, it's a good, we have a, a beer, a beer slash milk run, we've got a rib eating contest.
Beer run is gonna be incredible.
This, I was talking to the chief of police last night and he's like, you know what? That sounds like a lot of fun.
I know. Every person, every person's like, can I do that? Like, yeah, you can do it.
Yeah.
Of course you can do it.
Absolutely. Ribbiting contest, beer, I mean, it's a family-friendly event, so we've got a, a chocolate milk run to coincide with.
You can bring your kid, you're not gonna be embarrassed.
Mac and cheese eating contest for the kids instead of ribs. Um, although I suppose if the kids wanted to get in, you can have a chance to win, run it. Uh, what do, what am I forgetting? We've got vendors that are coming. Um, we have, we have jousting.
Jouster, you know, like American gla- the old American gladiators who will have one of those podiums up there. You got the golf cannon.
Yes, golf boloos is coming. They've got uh, like a twenty-five or thirty-foot inflatable dinosaur that's gonna be in our back parking lot. You should do tennis. Usually they're on a golf course, but this entire thing is a fundraiser for some local veterans groups. Um, we have an amazing VFW post here in town that was just built a couple of years ago.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, an organization called The Patriot Place.
Yep.
They house uh homeless veterans. Um, remind me some of the time, there's a new phrase for homeless also, by the way, speaking of language. Um, and then another amazing group called Quilts of Valor. Um, these are some folks that make quilts that they donate to veterans. And uh, a dear friend of ours also makes handmade pens, so they give a personalized pen.
That's really cool.
Yeah, it's, it's very cool. So everything that we do always has um, a charitable mission behind it.
Yep.
Last year, we're just over a year out from the tornado that hit Gaylord. Last year, we raised over five thousand dollars.
It was so cool.
Via Fuel Fest and our good buddy Dave Landau. Huge shout out to Fuel Pass Ambassador Dave Landau. Love you, buddy. Check out his show. It's incredible, hilarious. Go see him if he's around on tour. Um, dude, what am I missing? Fuelfest dot com or dot net, fuelfest dot net is where you get tickets.
No, Abraham Lincoln.
Oh my, that's, I knew I was forgetting something.
Like the Abe, Honest Abe, he will be here.
Abe will be here.
He's gonna get part of the Gaysburg address.
Yes.
He's gonna tell us and educate us on exactly why July second really is already the best day. And then you get to get your picture with him, everything you got. I think we should convince him to do the beer run. If we get Abraham Lincoln.
I'm doing it. If you run, I will do it. I don't run, but.
It's only a mile. It's four laps around. You can walk part of it. It hurts. If Abraham.
Oh, that's what I'm saying. I'll do it. If he, if he doesn't, I'm in, I'm in.
No, so we have.
I'll scooter that bitch if I have to.
We, gosh, we literally have, so he's a, he, he, he's an Abraham Lincoln. Um, historical impersonator, and so the, there's a whole society of these guys. I mean, he literally goes down to Illinois once a year to the big Abraham Lincoln convention. You look on our website, the guy looks identical.
Love it.
He's fully in character the entire time. I mean, your kids can go up, get their pictures with him, he'll, he'll literally talk to him, and I believe his wife. Comes as Abraham Lincoln's wife as well. So I mean, it's, it's like a legit historical experience. It's gonna be so cool.
It is gonna be really cool. The City of Gaylord, uh, Downtown Development Authority was nice enough to give us use of the pavilion for the day.
Really cool.
Um, which, you know, is something we don't take very lightly, because it's a huge thing for them.
Yeah.
Uh, they also just gave us permission to do a beer garden, now back to the restaurant, so City of Gaylord, huge shout out to them.
Yeah.
But more importantly, our, our, our sponsors, Price Slide, um, is always a, a, a great partner to have.
Silicon Valley Gaylord.
That's right, right here in G-Town. Uh, you know, we've got Mega Power Sports jumped on board, Trucker Randy. If you guys don't know who Trucker Randy is, just Google the dude. Um, he's, he's. He, I, I do a radio show. He's got a show called founding fathers, which aligns, you know, specifically with what we do and defending the constitution. Action Motorsports here in town. Uh, Action Motor Sales, I should get it correctly, because they go beyond that now, Action Motor Sales. White Birch Outfitters, I think Forty-Fifth Parallel, uh, Forty-Fifth Life is jumping on board. Uh, Jay's Sporting Goods, I think is.
Yeah, Jay's is in.
Everybody should know who Jay's Sporting Goods is.
Yeah, they're way bigger than us.
There, I don't even know if I wanna say what they're jump dumping in for, for a thing quite yet, because it's, it's kind of a big deal.
Yeah, we'll release that next time.
Um, but, yeah, I mean, it's a lot of information. Go to fuelfest.net. There's a schedule of events. It's a whole big deal.
Tickets are literally only ten bucks.
It's so cheap. It's meant to be a family.
They're only down, so, so on the price line.
Yeah.
My plug, you can get a ticket right now for nine ninety-nine. You commit to it. You're not even buying it. And as more people commit, so tell everybody, the price just continues to go lower and lower. It can go as low as five bucks.
I, I, it's such a cool idea that Price Light has come up with and how to sell. I mean, we sell gift cards during the price, we sell t-shirts.
Sure, yeah, we've, we've, we've tried a lot of things.
We, we've done a lot, a lot of really fun things, very, very successful. Um, and anything we do ticketed, we do with Price Light. Check out Price Light. Uh, anybody that has anything that they ever wanna try and do with Price Light, reach out to Drew.
Yep.
Um, these guys are fascinating. Like I said, they, they're bringing Silicon Valley right here to G-Town.
That's the goal.
Um, and, and it's, it's fun, it's fun to watch, it's fun to be a part of as well.
Cool.
Um, so, like I said, get your tickets, commit now. There's a lot, you're gonna see a couple of different slides in there as well. So you can get tickets for the mac and cheese or the rib contest, the beer run, all that stuff. Very, very, very affordable. That is the entire point. Bring the family.
Yep.
A big thing. They're, they're the ones that allow us to not have the twenty-dollar ticket prices.
Fifty-dollar ticket price.
Well, okay, so.
This event, this event should be ticketed between fifty and a hundred dollars.
Uh, this.
As far as the value you get.
What I, I, yes, what, what I'm about to say is not a knock on, on another festival, but there is a great hometown festival. Uh, a little bit more than a week later, Albin Fest, and you know, their, their wristbands, they're not cheap. You get a, a, a lot of things to do, but this is gonna guaranteed to be more fun.
Yeah.
Right? Albin Fest, you drop the kids off and the kids go do their thing. This is bring the kids and you get to do things with your kids.
Yeah, it's pretty cool.
And if you don't have kids, there's a beer garden, there's comedy. Uh, I think Drew might have mentioned, we have some pretty awesome artists coming, so I mean, it's, it's really, it's really something for everybody. And it's not just us, it's the community right downtown that's also coming together uh, to put this entire thing on. I, I gotta mention another person, you know, Linda at uh, the Holistic Spa we're working with right now. I think they're gonna come over and do some chair massage and stuff. I mean, it's gonna be really cool. Uh, any of our Fuel Pass holders, you get your tickets for free because you're a Fuel Pass holder. If you don't know what a Fuel Pass is. Look for the V I P ticket on the slide right there. That gets you in, that gets you a Fuel Pass, that gets you all of the cool things that Fuel Pass holders get.
They get special seating, lifetime access to all events we do.
All kinds of cool stuff. Uh, I've been talking to Dave Landau. Uh, Dave Landau is probably gonna try and pipe in with us here one of these days on the podcast. He is a Fuel Pass ambassador and owner. Uh, big deal. I know I already mentioned it, but he's, he's such a fun guy. Um, so I've, I've rambled on enough about all of this. Thank you.
Yeah, no, this was fun. Thanks for letting me be the first guest on Fuel Cast TV. That's, that's huge.
Comments, uh, make sure you follow us. If you follow us YouTube, uh, rumble, anywhere you can find an audio or video podcast. Uh, follow us, like us, shoot comments uh, below this. Uh, let us know what you think. It helps boost our ratings, it helps gets us up there, and we generally wanna know what you think and what you feel. Um, about what it is that we're saying and how we're conveying it, because we're here for the audience.
Absolutely.
You have other things to do, I have other things to do, but this is monumentally important to the both of us, and again, I find it fascinating. So thank you for tuning in.
Yeah.
If you haven't already, hit the follow, hit the subscribe button. Uh, until our next topic and our next podcast, thank you for tuning in, thank you for coming, thank you for joining.
It's fun.
Thanks, guys.